Good evening. Welcome to the special session of the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners this Wednesday, March 26, 2025. Everyone would stand with us, please. Our Commissioner Chaplain Romel McMurray will lead us in our prayer and our pledge.
Let us pray. Lord, we stand to say thank you this evening. When we opened our eyes this morning, we already knew that this is another day that you have made, so let us rejoice and be glad in it. Lord, I ask that you continue to protect our first responders, our military, and the people all across our country. I ask that you be with us tonight during this special called session meeting. Let us remember why we are here, who we represent, and what we need to accomplish. Being a team is about believing and trusting in ourselves and amongst each other. So I choose to believe, Lord, that we'll all come out victorious at the end of it all. Give us the wisdom to examine all the facts and things that are presented to us to make well-informed decisions for the citizens of Rutherford County. We were sent here to lead, so give us the courage to do just that. As the late Martin Luther King Jr. once stated, "The ultimate measure of a man or woman is not where they stand in moments of comfort or convenience, but where he or she stands at times of challenge and controversy." So let it be known that the time is now for our sakes, our children's sakes, and their children's sakes. Let us rise to the occasion, dear Lord, and take care of the people's business, because at the end of the day, we know that leaders take arrows. It's in your name that we pray. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. You may be seated. This time I'll call on our Rutherford County Clerk Lisa Quall to call the roll, please, Lisa.
Commissioner Oliver.
Present.
Commissioner Piercy.
Here.
Commissioner Rather.
Here.
Commissioner P.
Here.
Commissioner Davison.
Here.
Commissioner Beverly.
Here.
Commissioner Kush.
Present.
Commissioner Reed.
Here.
Commissioner James.
Here.
Commissioner Wilson.
Here.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson.
Present.
Commissioner Boyd.
Here.
Commissioner Paul Johnson.
Here.
Commissioner Irvin.
Here.
Commissioner Harris.
Here.
Commissioner Dodd.
Here.
Chairman Phillips.
Present.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Here.
Commissioner McMurray.
Here.
Commissioner Gooch.
Here.
Commissioner Serenio.
Yeah.
We have a quorum, 21 present.
Thank you, Lisa. Item D is public comments. Our rules state that we have 30 minutes set aside for public comments. We have 13 people signed up. Mr. Chairman Protim, do you have a motion?
Yes, sir, I do. That 39 minutes, if they all speak for three minutes, 13, it'd be 39 minutes. I'll move that we extend the time allotted from 30 minutes to 45 minutes, so that we can have the time to speak.
Have a motion in a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Motion passes. Thank you. First on our list is Melissa Farley. Her topic is the landfill. Roads don't allow. Mr. Smotherman, the timer's there. You've got three minutes.
All right. How everybody doing? My name is Brian Smotherman. I'm here, I'm standing, I'm for the expansion, for Republic. Not only because my fields, I run the fields out there, the sports fields out there for the football fields on a Saturday morning around there. Y'all will see a whole bunch of, in August, y'all will see a whole bunch of cars. That's because they're out there playing youth football. One thing about Republic or BFI, my uncle started, he started the fields out there while back in maybe like the late 90s or whatever, like maybe early 2000s. Nobody was really looking to help with youth football at that time, getting into some fields. There's a lot of soccer fields around here, guys. A lot of, that's a very nice fields around here for baseball. But for youth football, we gotta take up all the space for the high schools. I mean, I hope y'all think about that one day. But Republic opened it up for him back then, and it was really, you know, it was generous of them. And, you know, they don't charge a lot, so that's a really good thing that happens. Also, you know, years down the road, I decided to start our program in 2018. They was there to help. They was there to help when no one, like I've asked a lot of people to help, but they was ones that lend a helpful hand. Now, ain't you tired of the smell? Right? You tired of the smell? Back in 2018, there was a lot of smell going on. But when Mike came, when Mike came, I seen it change a little bit. It's nowhere, it's nowhere near as bad as it used to be. And I've been out there probably more, I take care of the grounds out there too, as far as that football grounds or whatever. If y'all look out there, it's, a lot done changed. It's nowhere near as bad as it used to be. On that, I'm from Murfreesboro. I live here. These guys said they keep answering all the calls that y'all keep calling at them. Hey, we don't want Davidson County trash. They said, okay, let's not take Davidson County trash. Hey, the smell, well, they've been working on it. It's been getting better. I believe in Mike and that. I do. I believe he can, he's continued to work. He's working on that smell. And he's talking about the economic purposes. Hey, I don't like seeing nobody lose any jobs. And these signs just laid off. Used to work there myself. I don't, I don't want to see anybody else losing jobs. My program, just to tell y'all a little bit, we work with a lot of inner-city kids that can't afford the more expensive programs. Republic helps with that. I think they're a great neighbor to us, and I think we need to keep, from what they're proposing with the extension to the old county landfill and getting things together there, because I don't know how well it's been taken care of. And I'm on the outside looking in on that. I don't got, I don't got all the answers to that, but I know there's a lot of misinformation on both sides. And I just think we need to keep business here. We need to keep money here. Thank you, guys.
Thank you, Mr. Smotherman. George Cochran.
Chairman Phillips. Chairman Phillips, did the gentleman say where he lived?
No. All I've got's a telephone number. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Topic is also the flow. Yes, sir. Yes, sir. That's a surprise. Glad to be able to speak. My name is James Farley. I'm at 5111 General Eisenhower Drive in Liberty Heights subdivision. So I wanted to speak about the affluence and then changes that I've noticed at the Walter Hill recreational area, and then also talk about concerns about PFAs being tested, PFOAs being tested as well. So first of all, I'd like to reference a comment made this Monday. This Monday was made during the debate between Mayor Carr and the Middle Point manager Mike Claussen. This is one of Mike Claussen's quotes. He says, "There has been," and I quote, "there has been situations, and they're there, there always will be, which is part of running a really complicated facility where you get extreme weather that moves in, and you have a situation which temporarily there's a problem that happens. And the concerns with the problems that happens are what happens with the affluence that runs, that runs into the waterway. It's not only the affluence that runs off from stormwater, but also the concerns of leach aids. It's also a concern that's been brought up by the city of Murfreesboro as well, and their amended complaint in the U.S. District Court, where they were concerned with pollutants in Bubba Springs, Matthew Lake, Wade's Branch, and the Walter Hill Recreation Area." Would also like to mention there's also concern as far as what's happened in the past with mud and dirt that's accumulated on the, on the tires of the trucks at the landfill. And there were issues with the washing station and with the sweeper, and what happens when that, when that material off the truck tires ends up on the road, and then rainwater mixes with that and, and washes that into the, into the water. I'd like to say I went to Walter Hill regularly for a while, and I had noticed changes there. We'd take kids there fishing as well, and I've noticed changes over the years, and I've noticed that there's not as many people going there now, and, and we don't go there as much either, out of environmental concerns that we've noticed. Changes to the boat ramp, for example. It is now super slippery. I don't know what's happened. I don't think it's algae, but I will say in the last three or four years, I can barely walk down it without falling down. So, so it seems like something's accumulating to me from my opinion. So my opinion, I'd like to conclude with that and say, just concerned about the environmental impacts of the landfill. It would be different if it wasn't so close to our, close to our drinking water, but I would also like to say that other landfills, when there's, they sometimes test for PFAs, PFOAs, but from, from the Middle Point's website, it states that they state for aluminum, iron, magnesium, and suspended solids. I would like to know what would be necessary to start having them test for PFAs, either from a TDEC perspective, or, or that seems, that would be prudent considering the contamination that's been referenced by the city of Murfreesboro. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mr. Farley. Did you state your address?
It is 5111 General Eisenhower Drive.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Next is Eric Myers. Mr. Myers' topic is also the landfill. Address, if you would, please.
Good evening. Good evening, Chairman Phillips. Eric Myers, I live on 7324 Appomattox in District 2. I just wanted to take a minute to reflect on why we are here tonight. We're here because our good neighbor and solid waste partner once again has put Republic first, as they always seem to do. Our central regional board was given authority by the state of Tennessee to pass resolutions to control solid waste within its region. They passed a resolution within their state given authority, and Republic chose to ignore it. Republic had the ability to protest the resolution. They had the ability to file another lawsuit against the board, but Republic chose to do nothing. They chose to do nothing because they knew that TDEC was going to do nothing, and they assumed that the Rutherford County Commission also would do nothing. When Donna Barrett simply asked you for your help in asking TDEC to enforce the laws of Tennessee, there was an immediate reaction of fear and panic in the room. I never thought that a simple request to have our solid waste partner comply with state law would create such panic. I would only assume that this is because many members of the commission are afraid of what will happen when we request that our solid waste partner follow the law. Just think about that for a second. So many members are afraid of what public, Republic would do, that you all went into executive session, and you reviewed it with the county lawyer, the environmental lawyer, at least that's what we were told, and in a few minutes, you are again going to be going into executive session, all out of fear of how our solid waste partner would react to being asked to follow the law. Republic has now put forth a 50-year plan for their expansion that includes an environmental accountability council. We are told this council will have teeth to hold them accountable. How can we expect a group of citizens to have teeth over a multi-billion dollar company when they have such blatant disregard for the existing statutes of Tennessee? How is the citizen board expected to have more sway over Republic than a board that was created, sanctioned, and given legal authority by the state of Tennessee over All I'm asking tonight is that you reflect not only on the vote that you are making here tonight, but think about the eventual vote of whether you want to have Republic as your trusted solid waste partner for the next 50 years, and if they will ever be anything more than Republic first.
Thank you, Mr. Myers. Next is Kennedy Holloway. Next is Jeff Neal. I'm not going to be redundant. Everybody that signed up is talking about the landfill tonight, okay? Address, if you would, please.
My name's Jeff Neal. I live at 3576 Old South Road, I live in the Blackman area. So it really doesn't affect me a whole lot, but it affects this county. And we put this off too long. You see, there's 95 counties in this state. Each county has to deal with trash. And our problem is we've been dealing with about 25 counties, or Nashville, whatever it is. Here's what I do. You get all them mayors in the room, especially that O'Connell in Nashville, and you tell them, you want to keep dumping trash? You want to pay a fee? Come on. We'll pay a fee, and I have it so high, you won't be able to pay it when I get through with you. That's what it amounts to. So what it amounts to is 2029 is going to close up. Republic's plan is to dump trash 50 more years. I will be here, ain't made no difference. But the younger people, they're the ones who have to suffer. You gotta put it somewhere. You gotta put trash somewhere. You gotta recycle it. Now, curbside recycling's great, I love that, but not everybody's going to do it. I wish majority of people would do it. See, Japan and countries over there, they ain't got, they ain't got no land like we got. They have to recycle everything, burn it all, whatever. But they do, they keep their country clean. They don't fool around over there. But we just, we need to get this plan solved, get it solved, and, and pull this landfill closer when it closes, and have some kind of plan instead of dumping trash everywhere. It's in 2080 what's going to happen. What are we going to do then? We won't even be here, half of us, or three-fourths of us. What are we going to do? We going to dump 50 more years? 2130, 2180? Let's keep on dumping. Dump, dump, dump. That's what I say. You better solve it. If you don't, somebody else not be in that seat solving it for you when you get through. It might be solving it for you. So you better do it tonight, or do it real fast. And Captain Mary, you might be doing it too. You might be somebody be solving it for you, is what you're going to get through now. So y'all think about that. Dump, dump, dump. Think about that when you get your trash out. Take your trash out Monday or Tuesday, or y'all take it out next week, whatever service y'all use. Think about dump, dump, dump. See y'all.
Thank you, Mr. Neal. I think it's Bratchler, not Bratcher. Give us your address, if you would, please, sir.
Good evening. My name is Jim Bachelor. I live at 1703 Wiltshire Drive, and sound like I'm on the losing team tonight. I just wanted to say a few things. I had an opportunity in Rotary Club. As a matter of fact, I understand all three Rotary Clubs the last week or two have been visited by Mike, and Mike puts on a heck of a presentation, and I think Mike's a good man, and Mike, I think, has the environment at heart. I don't know about his company. I don't know anything about the organization that he's part of, but I guess for some period of time, we're going to have what we have. And I think we need to learn to live with that, and I think we got a man in Mike that's willing to do that. So I have no problem at all with finding new, new ways, new methods, but right now we've got what we got, and I think we need to trust that the people that are running it, if we're not happy with them, tell them what to do. What's, what can they do or not do? And I know there's people who have opinions, but if we need to spend the money, maybe just spend the money there on what needs to be done, at least to get by until we come up with some new technology. So that's all I have to say. I appreciate the opportunity to be here, and I want nothing but the best for my community. I've lived here for 30 years, and I have kids there and grandkids. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hello. My name's Robert Reaver. When I came here, I was very uninformed, but I heard, it's always been a problem with the dump for people. I live in Murfreesboro. I moved to Murfreesboro in 1988, and I love Murfreesboro, and I got family that live at Walter Hill, so I know the smell. And I've learned, talking with you all, that I don't know enough about what's going on. I need to, tomorrow I need to start hitting the books, do my research, and find out what's going on with this company, and what's really going on, and why are there so many people that live around the garbage dump that are so uncomfortable with what's going on? Before I, I've learned before I point fingers at other people, I need to do my research. I'm still a little naive about what's going on here. I need to look at it, find out what's going on, because any company, they always put profit first. I understand that. But they, but when you're dealing with people's lives and their children, you need to look at the environment. I've had concerns about Stones River, and I've heard things about that and the environment. I know they, I know all companies need to make a profit, they got, especially if they're, you know, they got stockholders, but we need to think about the future of our, our youth, our children. I'm an older man, I've got grandchildren, I've got children, you know, and, and, but yeah, we need to make the company accountable. Okay, they say what they're not damaging the environment, they're not causing problems. Well, talk to the people that live there. Show me some research. Let's see what you got. And so for me, I'm not comfortable with the situation right now, and I need to do more research and find out to make myself comfortable what's going on, but what, the way it is right now, there's too many people that are upset about this situation, and that's a red flag for me. Thank you.
Thank you. Give us your address.
Good evening. Thank you for this opportunity, Chairman Phillips. Laura Clark, 911 Netherland Drive. I live in the Meadow Green subdivision. I affectionately say, I live in the hood, and I'm very happily so I'm here tonight. I attended a great town hall last night, offered by Republic, and it was good to be there, good to listen. Mike Claussen impressed me as a good guy. He seemed thoughtful, he seems to be a good person, but he is doing the work of Republic and using the voice to speak on behalf of the corporation, Republic, as he should be since he is the voice of Republic. And so I appreciated the opportunity to go to the town hall and hear from Republic and to hear their points and rationale, but after hearing it, I'm even more convinced we do not need to expand the landfill. And so, a few points. First, Republic has eroded the trust of our community in their, at minimum, their mailing campaign, where they had intentionally misleading information on that card that came. I don't know who got the card. I got it twice, where it told me to call this number and let my commissioner know why I support the Republic plan. Well, you can think, imagine what my message was when I called the number. I said, no, I oppose it. And so, second, Republic cites the Burke Report from MTSU of the positive economic benefits to Rutherford County, but the positive economic benefits will be on Republic, more so than this community. So the impact is on Republic, positive economic impact. Third, Republic has offered to be a good neighbor. They talked about that last night. We want to be a good neighbor, and have already contributed some amenities to different areas in the city. And they say, we want to be a good neighbor, but our question is, why are they waiting till now to start being a good neighbor when they've been around a long, long time? And those are recent efforts to bring amenities to the community. And finally, our county has other options rather than expanding this landfill. There are composting, there's recycling, and there's what's called waste to energy. Someone mentioned Japan. It's happening in other places where they burn the waste. We have other options, and our county has a plan in place that offers some other options. I oppose this expansion, and I oppose Republic's tactics to communicate with our community, and I really appreciate the opportunity to speak to you tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Quall. Ms. Allen, it's good to see you up and about and walking around as well as you are.
Good evening. My name is Susan Allen. I live on Nelson Lane in Murfreesboro, and I, Commissioner Irvin is my Commissioner, District 14. I'm here tonight in the hopes that you will get the advice you need in your executive session that will assure you that supporting the Central Tennessee Region Solid Waste Planning Board's resolution requesting enforcement of flow control is a wise decision. It's incredibly difficult to believe that Tennessee government has given the regional board this authority, and then a department such as TDEC refuses to enforce it with some vaguely worded response. Rutherford County has been rebuffed time and time again from, by our state legislature pertaining to local matters that are incredibly important. So you, I'm sure, understand the frustration of this board, having to go through you merely to get support for a resolution to request the General Assembly and the Governor's Office to require TDEC to do its job. That's it. They just want TDEC to do its job. Please support this resolution. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Allen.
My name's Don Turf. I live at 9911 Midland Road. I live a long way from the dump. However, I, I'm not a Republican fan whatsoever. You had my, I had your service when I, I moved here 20 years ago. I enjoy Tennessee. It's centrally located for my travels to, I'm 12 hours from family, either way. But you bought out my garbage company, and then within a year, you doubled my bill, and the letter that basically said, we're not making enough money. Where I come from, it, waste management was our service, and they do a wonderful job. Wayne High Zinga did an awesome job with waste management, and they actually know how to properly transport waste. I'm in the construction industry. I've been building for 41 years. I drive to Nashville a lot, and I had the, I helped a friend of mine out at one of your transfer stations over at AAA. Some of the stuff that I was seeing coming in there, big cubes of plastic that wasn't recycled, you guys were pushing it into the landfills. There's no proper management whatsoever with Republic. If I need to be a greedy company, you look out for your best interest, and the people are not your best interest. I've been out to Walter Hill. Matter of fact, I, I went over there with a pickup truck two weekends ago. I just had six pieces of drywall, because I can't take it to my drop-off station, because they don't take construction. You want to charge me $75 to bring six pieces of drywall to your landfill and throw it in a dumpster? You're a greedy company. I do not support you. I do not support you whatsoever. It would be in this board's best interest to find other resolutions than expanding the landfill. This is our taxpayer dollars. I'm going to be here till I die. I own my land, I own my house, and I keep building, and something needs to be done with the landfill. We need to have testing done, and some more people need to be held accountable for the incompetence of their jobs they're not doing. You guys are all given a position, you're all given a job. Stand up and do your job, and hold these people accountable. We need to take care of the people and the youth and the future of Murfreesboro. I don't care about Nashville. I could care less about Nashville. I do everything I can, and I stay away from that place. I, I want Rutherford County. We should think about Rutherford County, take care of the people in Rutherford County. And Nashville, if they, they don't have the money, maybe they should cut their, cut their board or whatever. They're, they're bloated with bureaucracy. We need to take care of Rutherford County. Thank you.
Thank you. Laura McGowan.
Good evening. Good evening. My name is Laura McGowan, and I'm a resident of North Murfreesboro. I would like to speak to you tonight concerning this resolution that you're about to vote on and why it is so important that you vote to support it. The owners and operators of Middle Point Landfill had a town hall event last night, last night which I attended. It was an effort to explain their plan and answer any questions and concerns. One of those questions was one from an audience member who asked Republic's representatives to give an example of a community like ours, where they have resolved issues, been a good neighbor, and had success. The president of Republic's mid-south area responded and cited the Charlotte Motor Speedway landfill in Cabarrus County, North Carolina, as his example of success. He went on to say that Republic had been a really, really good neighbor with even things that are non-regulated, like odor and nuisance, dust, so on and so forth. He said that Cabarrus County has a citizens advisory board, just like the one they would like for our county to have. He said it was made up of a couple of retired engineer neighbors that, quote, "lead from the community right next door," whatever that means, because right next door doesn't sound like from that specific community. But anyway, he then said that those engineer neighbors bring stuff back to the community meetings and that, quote, "they're a voice, they're within us." Again, a very puzzling choice of words. Well, a quick Google search brought up the following article from WSOTV. The headline reads, "Neighbors Say Landfill Smell Hasn't Improved After State- approved Action Plan." It goes on to say, "Cabarrus County, North Carolina, a strong smell coming from a landfill is tormenting people in Cabarrus County neighborhood. It's not the first time Channel 9 has heard complaints. Neighbors first brought their concerns to us last summer, but now they say it is getting worse." The article shares much more that we don't have time for, and this article was from February 20th, 2024, only a year ago. This is Republic's example of success. This is the company that we are trusting, that we are holding up as the professionals who will solve everything. The company we haven't been able to trust in the past, but suddenly, we, now we can. No, we can't. It's the company that won't respect a decision made by our community in 2018 or who will not currently comply with our Regional Solid Waste Board. Cabarrus County will be dealing with Republic for years to come, and unfortunately, so will we. If you do not support Donna Barrett's resolution tonight and in the future, vote no to Middle Point's expansion. And one last seemingly unrelated, but actually very relevant thought, a landfill does not belong next to the source of our entire county's drinking water. Yes, it's already there, as I've heard some say, so let's maintain and contain what's already there and keep it safely under control, instead of adding hundreds of new acres to its footprint, compounding the situation and completely overwhelming our water supply. Please say yes to this resolution and no to expansion. Thank you.
That concludes our public hearings. Next on our agenda is really our only agenda item. The commission will go into recess to, for executive session, so everyone except the commission and its attorneys are asked to vacate the courtroom. This time, I'll call the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners, special session, back into session. We've had a, an executive session. We get to item F on our agenda, and I'd like to call on the chairman of our Public Works Committee, Chairman Anthony Johnson.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Tonight, we have a resolution for Middle Point to be in compliance. It's be presented by Donna Barrett. She's the chairperson of the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Board. So Chairperson Barrett will come up.
Thank you, commissioners, chairman. What I'm going to start with is reading the revised resolution that's before you. It was, and I'm doing this, I know all of you have seen it, it should have been in SharePoint available to you. This is also in, for the general public that's out here joining us tonight. The resolution you have before you states, whereas--
Excuse me, excuse me, I apologize.
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Chairman, I've been told that people that are viewing can't hear it. Can we make sure that the audio is back on from when we were in executive session?
Thank you. Yes, we can.
Can I be heard now? All right, I'm going to proceed. All right, the resolution states, whereas TCA 68-211-814-B1B gives the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Planning Board, CTRSWPB, the authority to plan for regional solid waste disposal capacity, and whereas Resolution 22-003 was adopted by the CTRSWPB on April 25th, 2022, by unanimous vote after the required public hearings and meetings, and whereas the membership of the Central Tennessee region is comprised of members appointed by the counties of Cannon, Coffey, Rutherford, and Warren, and whereas TCA 68-211-814-B1C limits the time of an aggrieved person to appeal the action of the region to, within 30 days, to any chance record in the region or authority which took such final action, and whereas to date, 23 months since passage, Republic Services has taken no action to appeal the action of the CTRSWPB in adopting Resolution 23-003, 22-003, to either any chance record in the region nor the CTRSWPB which took such final action. And whereas, according to TCA 68-211-107, the department, TDEC, shall exercise general supervision over the operation and maintenance of solid waste processing facilities and disposal facilities or sites, and such general supervision shall apply to all the features of operation and maintenance which do or may affect the public health and safety or the quality of the environment and which do or may affect the proper processing and disposal of solid waste. And whereas the Host Benefit Agreement for Middle Point Landfill dated April 25th, 1995, requires the operator of Middle Point Landfill to comply with local, state, and federal law, and whereas the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners finds it appropriate to support and encourage compliance by both Republic Services and TDEC with their respective rights and duties under Tennessee law, now therefore be it resolved by the Rutherford County Board of Commissioners that it hereby requests that TDEC take such action as appropriate to assure compliance with the lawful orders of the Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Planning Board. Be it further resolved that it is hereby requested that Republic Services take such action as may be necessary to comply with applicable law and the Host Benefit Agreement. Resolve this 26th day of March, 2025. Now, as a reminder, this resolution is coming from your Central Tennessee Regional Solid Waste Board, and we are asking for support in our request, asking TDEC to be the enforcement that they are supposed to be for the authority that we have been given. And I will stand for questions.
I'll entertain a motion.
Motion for discussion.
It's a motion to adopt.
We have a motion and a second. Who's second? We have a motion and a second to adopt. Now we're open for discussion or comments. Commissioner Kush.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Donna, simple question. Maybe a harder answer, simple question. Help us understand why this is important for the commission to vote on this.
As I stated at our last meeting, for two and a half years now, I have made, the board has made efforts to reach out to TDEC and offer support to them for the enforcement that they have, that our board does not have. And that has been met with little response back. The first response came two months after our initial letter indicating that we were offering support for the enforcement. And I want to remind everyone, the, the resolution was passed in April. The actual implementation of it was going to be eight months later, on January 1, 2023. TDEC was notified, we offered our support and services to TDEC in December of 2022, with the hope that there wouldn't need to be that, because we expected compliance. That compliance never came from any of the landfills. Granted, we have one right now in Rutherford County or the region. TDEC's response to, our initial response came to, initial and only response came to us February, two months later, stating that they just didn't feel that it was the right path to go. No explanation, why not? No denying that it was their authority, no denying that they had enforcement, just, we don't think it's the right path to go. A initial letter sent to them, a follow-up letter delineating the TCA that said, I know what you think, but this is what you're supposed to do, has resulted in no response whatsoever. After that, a letter was sent to our delegation, asking for their help and support. They were out of session at that time. Conversation ensued with them last year, last four months of the year. We are now in session. They are now in session, and that anticip, it is anticipated that that session will wrap up, they're saying, April 22nd. I anticipate probably earlier than that. Committees are starting to close down now, and as this body knows, resolutions need to get to them before session closes or were delayed a whole another year. My board passed the resolution in its original format that you saw at the last meeting last night. We will be taking that to the delegation and asking for their support. This helps us go to the delegation and say, we all want TDEC to do its job that it's statutorily required to do. That's what we're asking. Long answer, I don't know if it was a hard answer.
Commissioner James.
Ms. Barrett, from our last meeting, you mentioned the idea of taking this resolution to the other counties within your board's jurisdiction. And I'm assuming, am I correct to assume that you still intend to do that, to get similar support from them?
That is still my intent. Their commissions haven't met and probably won't till we're out of session. I will point out that each one of those counties have representation on the central board, and that was a topic of conversation. If you recall, you were there Monday night at the meeting, and their representatives expressed extreme support, asking what they needed to do to get their delegation to support our delegation. So the support is there from the other counties.
Question.
Commissioner Oliver.
So you're saying that despite this resolution right here, you're still going to present your original resolution to the delegation?
Yes, ma'am.
Ms. Chair.
Commissioner Beverly.
If you can tell me, how many members on your board are appointed by Rutherford County Commission?
Four.
And that is not a majority. You need assistance to get anything passed from other citizens from, appointed by other county bodies, correct?
Correct. We have a 13-member board.
So not a supermajority. Other counties have to be on board for this type of action?
That is correct.
Thank you.
I will state that we had a unanimous vote Monday night of the board for the, the resolution coming from the board.
And the, back in 2022, that was a unanimous decision as well?
Correct.
Thank you.
Commissioner Piercey.
We've got a little confusion going on. You said your board voted on the original motion.
Correct.
We're going to vote on the revised motion.
Correct.
Why are we doing that? What, what's the point of us voting at all? If, if one county is carrying a revised motion, three counties are carrying a different motion, will it make it look like the four counties are not together?
The portions that remain of this resolution, with the exception of the last two phrases, which I've discussed with your legal counsel, are identical to the resolution that was presented to you and that my board voted on. The largest portion missing out of this, the important part, the part that, the biggest portion missing, is the delineation of exactly what we wanted to have happen. The immediate stopping of, I've got the original resolution here, where we stated, notify Middle Point of its unlawful activity, indicate that it has existed since January 1st, indicate the penalties will continue, conduct an audit, confirm damages, indicate penalties are due immediately, indicate unlawful activity must cease immediately. Those actions are the actions TDEC can take. Those things are listed in TCA individually as actions of enforcement by TDEC. So stating it this way says this without breaking it down.
When you present your motions that has been approved, are you going to present that three counties supported one motion, and then Rutherford County supported a lighter motion?
That would be an accurate statement, sir. The board supported one resolution that was more expansive in defining TDEC's authorities. The other three counties, because individually, have not voted on that yet, because their, their county commissions have not met in a timely fashion for me to get this to them before my board had to vote. You're welcome.
Other questions. Commissioner Johnson.
Last week, you brought a resolution to us. We decided to have it, discuss it tonight and put it to bed whichever way. But meantime, you went with your board, you passed it anyway. That makes me feel like, I appreciate all your work y'all do. I really do. And that makes me feel like we're just ignored or we've been gone around, because you're going to present the heavier resolution that seems like most of us probably weren't in favor of. So you had a lighter resolution, and now you're wanting us to go ahead and support that. That doesn't amount to a hill of beans, if you take that up there, because they're not going to pay any attention to it. Or if they do, it may help the ones that are on the other side not wanting it to be done. I mean, flow controls have, have been rejected many times, you know, everywhere else because of the chance of lawsuits, because they interfere with host agreements and things. I don't want to vote on a resolution. I don't want to vote it up and send it to the state, and then we're on the hook possibly for another lawsuit, when we don't have to, because you've already gone around us, or I won't say it that way. You've already put your resolution that you wanted in place, that your board wanted. So to me, it's a done deal. The resolution is already there that y'all want, don't need us. But we can still, and in the beginning, we could have, you could have asked us to talk to all of our representatives, and we-- to all of our representatives, and we would have done that. But instead, you came and presented a resolution that was really hard-handed, trying to punish Republic, and I know the feelings of a lot of the people, you know, that have called or come up here and spoken, and they want to be heavy-handed. I understand that. But everybody in the whole county doesn't feel that way. I'm getting many calls, I mean, my phone's blowing up, and I'm not hearing that. But I'm not ready to vote on Republic because we don't really have a full presentation or proposal from them. We have a starting point. We need a, we need to know everything that we can get out of them, have that brought to the table, and that's what I've been trying to do with Public Works. Now, it's relevant, trying to get everybody to come together and take Republic's offer or proposal and put that against ours and see which one was best. See if we want to mesh it or say, no, Republic, we don't want to do anything with you forever. But I still feel like what we do tonight wouldn't make a difference.
Mr. Chair.
To get us in a lawsuit possibly.
Mr. Chair. I'd like to, I'd like to expand on this point. They're not, I don't feel like they're circumventing us because they're an independent body, established by state law, not through commission charter or not through county charter. They're independent of us, there's no circumvention. They ask us a question and they're asking us for an answer. Don't kick the can down the road, answer the question we were asked. They presented their own resolution, this is a path they want to move forward, now they're presenting one to us. Answer it. We can't be afraid of the lawsuit. We have tools on our tool belt to utilize them. It's going to be the subject of discussion, but that is what we're being asked to do, is to answer a question and take leadership and move in a direction. And I don't think it's too much to ask for them to come to us and say, this is the direction we're moving. You don't have to move and adopt it verbatim. But please, ask the, or the authority of that industry to take the actions that they are legally able to do so. They're asking us to just answer a question. I think we, as a county body, can muster up the ability to do that.
Commissioner P. Ms. Barrett.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Commissioner. There's a couple of things I'd like to address with, with the statement made. I'm not circumventing. This body has known of the action of my board since it took the action in '22. I've done, we've done everything we can outside of coming here, knowing that this body had enough on its hands with your own discussions. You've gone into executive session twice now, last meeting and this meeting. We all knew concerns existed with, among some of this body with the wording of the last one. Discussions took place, I heard those concerns, discussions took place with legal as to what would be more appropriate and that would give this body the opportunity to be supportive of asking a government body to do its job regardless of what entity we're talking about it doing its job to, and make sure that nothing in that wording should compromise any future discussions or ongoing discussions you have or any contract currently in place. That was my attempt to have this, my attempt and your legal body's attempt to ease those concerns, and I feel we have done that with this resolution.
Thank you. Commissioner P.
I'm in support of this resolution, and, you know, I mentioned, I'm one of the ones that said, hey, stop, I want to speak to our attorneys because I was worried about our host agreement. Now, the reason I'm supporting this is because of TDEC. Now, whether you know it or not, once the commission has a rock quarry or landfill, I don't know what else, we no longer have control over that entity, even though it's within our borders. It is regulated, and they are regulated by the state of Tennessee, TDEC in particular. Some of those jobs I think have been added on to them over the years, maybe they're overwhelmed with some of this, but TDEC has never, in almost 28 years that I've been up here, been responsive to anything that I've ever called them about, period. Every time I've approached them with a problem, I get a big blank wall. They're not going to respond or they're going to ignore it, and I'm tired of that. I think that they should enforce state law, that's their job, that's what their entity is supposed to do, and that's all this resolution, in my opinion, is asking for them to enforce state law. And voting for this is saying, hey, we agree, you should follow state law. And again, in here, it states in our host agreement that Republic has already said, hey, we're going to follow all applicable state laws. So I don't see a problem with our host agreement being violated here. I would encourage you to support Ms. Barrett's resolution.
Commissioner McAdoo.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. My concern last, since the last meeting has been, how would this affect Murfreesboro If we pass this resolution, will it have any weight toward Murfreesboro lawsuit, toward Murfreesboro or toward Republic?
County attorney.
No, that is a, that is a separate matter, the litigation, the subject matter is different, and so I don't think that this would have any sort of tangential effect on the existing litigation between those two parties.
Thank you, Nick. Other questions?
Mr. Chair.
Commissioner Oliver.
Yes. I think my concern is, TDEC was approached, you presented information, they gave a response, which was their response. They know what the laws are, they know what they're, you know, supposed to be doing, and they responded. So I guess I'm just, I feel like TDEC knows something that maybe we don't even know to be able to make an educated or informed decision. So.
Mr. Chair. Commissioner, I think you're right. I think they do know something, and I'd like to know what that is, because I, the response we, you received was abnormal. So my hope is that this resolution will generate more discussion instead of saying, hey, you can respond with a letter and that's that. You ignore a body's resolution that was created under state law. This resolution says, hey, you need to not tell me just what you're, why you're not going to take, that you're not going to take action, but tell me why. Put everything out to be seen, and I don't think that's the wrong path forward. But I do think you're right, not everything from TDEC is out in the open right now.
Commissioner Johnson.
Ms. Barrett, as I said earlier, I didn't say it this way, but I'll say it now, I misspoke when I said you went around us or anything like that, and I want to apologize for that. That's not what I, it came out, that's what I, that's not really what I was feeling. I was just feeling that this would be useless past your resolution. Appreciate all the work that y'all do, and, but I just wanted to make sure you understood that, you know, I've retracted what I said, the way I said it.
Thank you, sir. And if I may, I don't think, I remember my time as a legislator, and I can assure you, the thoughts of this board were not irrelevant or useless on me. And I would like to think that our current delegation would feel that way as well. I can only tell you how I felt when it came to being the voice for this body and this community during the 10 years that I served. And if I could elaborate, Commissioner Oliver, I do understand the hesitancy. I'm going to go back on my, again, my days as a legislator. If there is something wrong with the law, and as I've stated, this resolution delineates what the law is for TDEC's enforcement, TDEC would change it. For as many legislators as you have up there bringing bills from the general, the general public, you have just as many legislative aides for the different departments, and they routinely bring legislation to change laws that are, in their eyes, unfair, unregulable, for whatever reason they have for wanting to change something. So to simply come out and tell me that they think it's just not the right path at this time is not an appropriate answer for a lawmaking government body.
Other questions?
I have another comment.
Ms. Barrett, did you say that you have the current support of our state delegation?
Yes.
Full support, okay, thank you.
During the hometown meeting last night at the fountains, one of your representatives from your board was there, and he voiced full support for Rutherford County in what we're trying to do with our landfill. So we have the full support of her board, there is no question about that. If you're worried about getting sued over supporting a resolution, you need to just forget that because they're going to have a lot more worse stuff to sue us over than that. This, that won't even cut to icing on that cake. They'll come up, they'll come up with a whole lot of stuff worse than a little support. When I come in here tonight, I really wasn't in favor of this, and I'll tell you why. Unless someone on this 21-commission floor makes an uneducated decision to rescind our 2018 vote and have it changed, we don't need Ms. Barrett because the landfill will close in four years like Mr. Klassen has said, and it will be over. The landfill will be gone. But it never hurts to have an extra tool in the toolbox. And yes, I'm going to support her resolution based on that fact because you cannot predict the future. Thank you.
Other questions? I'm ready to call for the vote. Our board is not working, so we will have a voice call vote, okay? We have a motion and a second to approve the resolution presented by Ms. Barrett. Ready to vote? Madam Cork, please call the roll.
Commissioner Oliver?
Nay.
Commissioner Piercy?
Yes.
Commissioner Rather?
Yes.
Commissioner P?
Yes.
Commissioner Davison?
Yes.
Commissioner Beverly?
Yes.
Commissioner Kush?
Yes.
Commissioner Reed?
Yes.
Commissioner James?
Yes.
Commissioner Wilson?
No.
Commissioner Anthony Johnson?
No.
Commissioner Boyd?
No.
Commissioner Paul Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Irvin?
Yes.
Commissioner Harris?
Yes.
Commissioner Dodd?
Yes.
Commissioner McAdoo?
Yes.
Yes.
Mr. McMurray?
No.
Mr. Gooch?
Yes.
Mr. Serrano?
Yes.
16 yes, 5 no.
Motion passes. Brings us to the end of our meeting. Brings us to the end of our meeting. I'll remind commissioners that we'll be in regular session on April the 17th. Once again, thank you for your attendance in this special session, and I'm thinking in my 30-plus years that I've been up here, Commissioner McAdoo, you may, you may correct me, but I can only remember one other time when we've had a special session in 30 years, and I can't even remember what that topic was. So this is a, really a unique situation, but it was an important topic, and the discussion that we had benefits the citizens of Rutherford County. Thank you for your attendance and your participation tonight. We are adjourned.